And now we're looping back around. That's over near Elaine's Restaurant and that area. And essentially, we're milling out the old road and repaving it. And so, that was one of the things that we just felt that we needed to do. And then, we will do the same thing going the other direction, all the way down to the Morgan Highway in the spring. So, that was one of those add-on type of things that came, but looking at it for the long term, by allowing the utilities to go in and to do the work, that means that the -- all of the things underneath the road, the gas lines, the water lines, sewage lines, those are all upgraded now, so they should be good to go for a long time, and the road won't have to have repairs later on. So, that's the one that we get asked about the most.
Who makes the decision as to what area, what road you're going to improve? Do you take part in that decision?
It's -- there is a -- there's a commission that meets. It's our Lackawanna-Luizern County Planning Authority. And basically, each county has, and this is all set up by the legislature, each county has a metropolitan planning organization that is for Lackawanna and Luzern. So, that's the main area that it comes. Now, there's other projects that get put in, different areas that, you know, based upon need. But as far as forecasting the long-term plans, it's an organization set up, and there's different people who are put on that organization, and so, they work with PennDOT and kind of plan out the whole thing. And something like the airport access road, that's how that came to be.
Now, this is the Evoque interchange, basically, and we all see some major work that started there this past year, right?
It did, yes. That started, that's a $45 million project that we're working on, and a number of things that are happening. First of all, the two that right now you have, exits A and B, that are both there together, that will be combined into one off-ramp. And so, they're going to be combining those. They're going to be extending the off-ramp. Right now, when you go down and you try to get off that, I don't know if you've ever done this, but you're cooking along at 65 miles an hour, if you're safe, and you're moving along there, and very quickly, you pull over and you have that real sharp turn there.
Heading toward the airport, heading north, right.
Heading toward the airport. And so, one of the reasons that we're doing the work there is they're going to -- they will extend that off-ramp and on-ramp, just to allow the cars to slow down, have a longer time to slow down getting off, and then a longer time to speed up getting on. So, it's a safety improvement project. They're also doing it for economic development. They're going to be building a road from that area back into the industrial park. And so, by doing that, they'll be able to help, hopefully, spur some economic development. And then, also, one of the other things that they're looking at is when you're coming up on 81, the Dupont exit, there's a whole lot of truck traffic
Oh, yes.
down in there. And so, that's always been an issue. And so, by bringing this new access road up and allowing the trucks to get off of the airport access, and then have -- go back into the industrial park, we hope to take a lot of the trucks off of the Dupont exit and bring them up this way and take them back, and it will help alleviate some of the traffic down there. So, it's a safety project, it's an economic development project, and it's going to also help with some of the traffic mitigation as well.
You know, I just want to say one thing. It's another light subject, but I don't break lines, David, when I'm going through an area and I see all the cars backed up. I get right in my spot. I don't go another mile and get in front of 100 cars and squeeze in. I love when trucks
I know where you're going.
get in the left, in the lane, so nobody can pass and blocks everyone.
Really, it really helps because it forces a merge when you should have done it
That's right, right.
You know, a mile or so back.
That's right. People do that a lot.
They do.
They just storm, they speed right by me, maybe 20 or 30 cars, and they get in front of me, and they should be in the back of the line, just like I am.
We tend to live in a very selfish culture, and people say, "Me first, and I want to jump ahead of you, and I don't really care if you've been there longer, I'm going to jump in front."
I want to get to another project that is going to be starting, I believe, any time now. And that is Interstate 84, which in Pennsylvania is in very, very bad shape, and this is probably one of the most unique show-and-tells we've ever had on the program.
I dropped Mike Toledo off at the door here, so we didn't have to carry this all the way over from my parking spot there. This is a core sample. This is a core that we took right out of, this actually came from Interstate 80.
So, you drilled down into, in this case Interstate 80?
Yes, into the concrete.
And then pulled this up?
You drill down and you pull it out. And we do this fairly often. You'll hear about PennDOT going out, taking a core sample of something. And essentially, what this does is it allows us to go down and to take a look at the road to see what's there. On Interstate 84, what's been happening on Interstate 84 is back in, and I don't want to spend too much time on chemistry and chemistry class, but in 1970, in the early '70s, when Interstate 84 was built, it was a concrete road. What they did not know back then was that the cement that you use, that they were using, and again, whenever you make concrete, basically, you take cement, mix it with rock and it becomes concrete. They did not know that this brand-new and improved cement from the early '70s, when you would mix it with a certain type of rock that was found in certain pockets around the world, and one of these pockets happened to be Pike County, Pennsylvania, it would have what's called alkali silicoreactivity. Basically, this new and improved cement would mix with a certain type of rock and begin to form a gel. And it would start to gel, and the entire interstate would then begin to crumble, as it would get moisture down here, it would crumble from the bottom up. That's what's happening on 84. So, 84 is not just a case of, why don't you get out there and fix the potholes. Essentially, the entire road is disintegrating from the bottom up. And so, because of that, they've gone out and they've tried to put asphalt on it just to kind of hold it in place. That has not worked. So, what is happening, unfortunately, we have to go in and completely remove all of Interstate 84 in Pike County and replace it. That project is starting this week. The first, it's going to be broken up into five stages. The first stage is going to be from exit 46, which is the Milford exit, to the New York Line. That's going to be a multi-year, $46 million project, or I'm sorry, $66 million project that we're going to be doing. That's just one-fifth of this project. But essentially, we're going to take it down to single lanes in both directions, and between now and next spring, they're building some crossover, so people are going to move all the traffic onto what is now the westbound lane. And so, what's now westbound will be westbound and eastbound, while they begin working on the eastbound lane. Even in that, what they, they see that the westbound lane is so bad right now that they're going in and doing some temporary paving, just to allow the cars to go on it without
There have been some serious voids there.
It has, and you know, it's one of those things that's been on our radar for a long time. A lot of this is just funding. They've known since the mid-'90s, essentially, that, about this alkaline silicoreactivity. And they've known that that's been taking place, but, you know, it's going to be $300 million, $400 million probably by the time it's all done to replace it.
Jim, and I don't know if you can answer this or not. I had always heard that there were some sort of contractual obligations whereby certain sections of the interstate were concrete and therefore had to remain that, certain sections were macadam. Is there anything to that?
I don't know. I've not heard that, but I can certainly look into that.
But there are sections that are macadam as opposed to concrete, are there not?
Yes, there are portions of the interstate. And usually, that decision is made based upon what's the most cost-effective way to do things at that time. You know, certain times when you're building, back in the '70s, oil was very, very expensive, and so, because asphalt is an oil base, we're starting to look now at whether or not, because a lot of, mostly what we do now is asphalt. But with the price of oil going up, we are beginning to look at that and to look and see whether or not it's better to go with concrete at this point. There's advantages and disadvantages to both.
And the new concrete, you now avoid this old problem.
You know what? We use the same concrete, but you put a third additive into it that prevents this from breaking down.
So, that problem has been solved, then?
That problem is solved, yes. And, you know, when you look at it, sometimes, when you're driving across 84, throughout Pike County, it's really, really rough, but then, once you get into Lackawanna, it's not nearly as bad. You can see the spots where they got rock from different quarries. And it really is, only little pockets around the world where this, and it was, you know, in the '70s, and nobody had any idea. And they would do the test, and who would think that, you know, we mix this cement with this rock, and it holds real well, unless you get this certain rock from Pike County, Pennsylvania, and you mix that in? You know, who would have known at the time?
Who's going to carry this back in the car? It's got to be 40 pounds.
It's heavy.
Mike Toledo?
Mike Toledo will carry it back for us, yes.
I have another question that arises, sort of meets our theme of getting into winter driving, but it fits at any time. There have been some changes with regard to the rules for teenage drivers
Yes.
in our state. And I know that one of the things that has been added has been a new sort of license plate, I guess, that is available. May I see that, Jim?
Yes.
Maybe you can tell me what that is?
Yep. This is the new teen driver's license plate. I'll pass it over there to you. First of all, it's completely voluntary. So, if anybody thinks that we're mandating that teenagers put this on the back of their car, we are not. It's simply a way that, for those of us who have teenage drivers, and I am one of those, for anybody who has teenage drivers, it's a way to identify the driver of that car as being a teenage driver. And you'll see in the corner there, there's a red triangle that says, "Teen Driver, Please Be Courteous." And, you know, I don't know about you, but many times, if I'm driving along and I see somebody in front of me doing something dumb, and I see them, you know, swerving around, it's sort of irritating, but when you pull up and you see that it's a 17-year-old, 18-year-old, and you realize that it's more just the difficulties that come with a new driver, I'm a little bit more patient. So, this is a good way just to identify the car as a teen driver.
Yeah, you know, I've seen cars with placards on reading "Student Driver"
Right.
or, you know, certainly, a van with a school designation on it, because they're carrying students, and just common courtesy, you give a little bit more. You perhaps have a little bit more patience when you're thinking about that.
We could do a show on road rage, too, sometime.
Absolutely. That's a big problem, isn't it, Jim?
It is. And, you know, we went back and looked at, over the last five years, there were about 850 teens who were killed across Pennsylvania. And when you look at that, many times, what's involved is that they're still learning the whole process. And so, you know, many times, it's speeding, many times, they miss red lights, they're distracted. We cannot emphasize enough for the importance of those of us who have teen drivers, of encouraging, mandating that our kids put the cellphone in the backseat.
Yes.
We got the one minute, but...
Yeah, I wonder if we may not see some major legal changes in the years ahead with regard to phones.
Well, there's the new texting law that came out recently, and texting is now banned in Pennsylvania. But yeah, the whole use of cellphones, and especially with teenage drivers
That's right.
even if it's legal. I tell my kids, make sure that the cellphone goes in the backseat, because even if they put it there next to them, it's instinct for them, as soon as
That's right.
it beeps or vibrates, that they look down at it and they pick it up without even thinking about it. It's just instinct.
That's a whole new show. That is a great show.
Yep, and so, we emphasize that to them as well.
We're out of time now, but that's a great show, David DeCausse. We have to do a show on that.
We did one some time back, but
Yes, we did.
that's one of those subjects that deserves repetition
That's right.
for the safety of all concerned. Well, Jim, thanks for being with us.
Thank you.
I think I'm a little bit more confident in looking toward old man winter now, having heard what you said.
Yeah.
I'll be watching those cameras to see where to go and where not to go. And again, real quickly, to contact you for the updates on roadwork?
All right. Thanks for watching UCTV Live. Mike Toledo, get ready to carry this in the car. And I want to thank you, Mark the Glory, for your great work. And this is Tom Monley, on behalf of my co-host, Dave DeCosmo, saying we'll see you next week.
Should be announced yet?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all those who died in the last week, particularly Mary Grace Alexander Shay Scott, beloved wife, sister of my friend Sylvia, aunt and great-aunt, Christiane Lilly La Perrier, Ph.D., loving daughter, life partner of Ginny, an accomplished musician, Alan D. Dolphin, devoted husband, father, grandfather, brother, uncle, and 29-year member of the Scranton Fire Department and retired fire inspector, and their dear families and many friends who suffer their loss.
If you would please remember Sandra Duff, mother-in-law of my brother Richard and his wife Missy and their family, as she has passed away this week.
Roll call, please, Mrs. Craig. Mr. McGough? Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Loscom?
Here.
Mr. Joyce?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Dispense with the reading of the minutes, please. Third order, 3A, Agenda for the zoning hearing board meeting to be held November 13, 2013. Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. 3B, Minutes of the composite pension board meeting held September 25, 2013. Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. 3C, Single tax office comparison of city funds distributed for 2012 and 2013. Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. 3D, Controllers' Report for the month ending September 30, 2013. Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. 3E, Minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting held September 25, 2013. Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. 3F, Minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meeting held September 25, 2013. Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do we have any clerk's notes tonight, Mrs. Craig? No, Mrs. Evans. Thank you. And do any council members have announcements at this time? Councilman McGough is unable to attend tonight's meeting due to illness. We hope you're feeling better soon, Bob. Next Tuesday, November 5, is General Election Day throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. You are not required to show a photo ID in order to cast your votes. Vital city and school board offices, as well as state judicial offices, appear on the ballot. Therefore, we urge you to exercise your right to vote. I'd like to wish all the candidates for elected office the best of luck, and particularly my colleagues Frank Joyce and Pat Rogan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, to all the children in our community, have a very safe and happy Halloween tonight. Fourth order, citizens' participation. Our first speaker tonight is Bill Jackowitz.
Happy Halloween, City Council.
Happy Halloween.
Happy Halloween. Seven thousand nine hundred sixty-five days ago Scranton was declared a distressed city under Act 47. That was 262 months ago, I.A.M. in real life. The city election will be held on Tuesday, 5 November. The voters of Scranton will be electing a new mayor, only the third mayor since 10 January 1992, a new city council, S.I.T.D., still in the dark. Last week, the residents learned that the audit had not been completed. Why? Same old story. Parking Authority has not submitted proper paperwork to the auditor. L.O.P.S.O.D., long on promises, short on delivery. Eight hundred forty thousand dollar fee, L.O.L., laughing out loud, paid to a financial advisor if he does his job and sets up a deal for the city to borrow more money, only to increase the debt. It's called success in Scranton. In the real world, it is called distressed. I.M.H.O., in my humble opinion. Mr. Judge, co-financial advisor, to earn a project success fee of either seventy-five thousand or 1.25 percent of the principal, whichever would be larger. 1.25 equates to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. W.I.I.F.M., what's in it for me? Arbitrations award, a hundred thousand dollars a month in interest. Pensions contributions, if not paid by December 31st. Five hundred four thousand dollars in interest. A loan, more success in Scranton. A.L.W., ain't life wonderful? Along with Mr. Joyce's fees, excuse me, along with Mr. Joyce's fees, other costs would include interest and other fees that would be due to other advisors and attorneys. W.O.M.B.A.T., waste of money, brains, and time. Mr. Judge's words. Professionals are doing a lot more work and expect to be paid for it, and the professionals are taking a lot more risk and expect to be compensated. Professionals should also be able to communicate properly. My response. This sounds to me like a New York Minute. Those are my words. We would take the city assets in a New York Minute. Those are the police and fire union's attorney words. New York Minute, a modern expression which implies that you would do something immediately, as in you don't have to think twice about it. F.C.O.L., for crying out loud. How about the non-professionals delivering work in the city of Scranton? Oh, I almost forgot. They're only the hard-working taxpayers who are being milked by the professionals and the unions. S.I.N., stop it now. One question, where does all the money come from? Oh, I almost forgot. A union bank that operates in New York State, who by the way will tack on more interest charges and fees that will be paid by the non-professional Scranton residents. T.K.O., technical knockout. Don't worry, be happy. The community's college students and nonprofits will gladly step up to the plate and pay the professionals. Attorneys who are already on the Scranton payroll for all the additional work involved with milking Scranton taxpayers. K.C.C.O., keep calm, carry on. I have some concerns about the 1 percent student tax that has been proposed. First of all, the University of Scranton, Marywood University, Johnson College, Lackawanna College, and the medical school do not need Scranton to be successful. Scranton needs the schools. The state and federal law is very specific in regards to nonprofits. If you do not agree with or like the law, then lobby your state representative, congressman, and U.S. senators. Voluntary contributions is just that, voluntarily. K.I.S., keep it simple. The Office Television Series, a comedy show, is off the air after eight or nine years. The Real Comedy Show will continue, titled Unprofessional Scranton Taxpayers of Scranton and Surrounding Area Milked by the Professionals, including elected officials. Finally, FYI, for your information. Medicare paid twenty-three million dollars for dead patients in 2011 and twenty-nine million dollars for drug benefits for illegal immigrants from 2009 to 2011, right from the Health and Human Services Inspector General's office. Isn't that the same office that is handling the website for the Affordable Healthcare Act? But yet we're giving money to illegals, immigrants, for drugs, and we're paying dead people? Wow, what a country.
Thank you. Lee Reed Morgan.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I don't have too much to say tonight, but I'd like to see if one more time we could try to create a Mark Walsh Day in the city. I know Tuesday's Election Day, but I would hope that maybe council would reach out to the mayor and try to make this a reality. I know it was discussed recently, and I do understand that he worked with Mr. Courtright, but this isn't a political thing for me. I assume I disagree with a lot of people a lot of times, but it doesn't mean that I don't respect them, and it doesn't mean that I don't recognize the good things they do. And I just hope the city could recognize Mark Walsh for the good things he's done. And when you saw this gentleman practicing law down in the courthouse, and even though he was ill, he was still working and contributing. And I just hope that the mayor and council would proceed forward and try to make that a reality. The mayor's going to be leaving office soon. Some of the council members will be leaving office soon. But I think it'd send a strong signal to residents and maybe would-be candidates someday to realize that their sacrifices are recognized, even though if they win election, they will not always be appreciated or agreed with. And the other thing I have here tonight is, no matter who wins this election on Tuesday, I hope they would put a recovery plan committee together of city residents. I don't know how they choose who would be on that committee, but I think that it would be very important to bring the neighborhoods and the residents of the city into the creation of this plan. And I think it'd make it a lot more transparent for a multitude of reasons. But I think that when you allow regular Scrantonians to really have a voice in their city, I think that'll send a very strong message that we intend to succeed, that we intend to listen to the ordinary person walking up and down the street, because the ordinary people walking up and down the street are going to be the people that are going to make this plan successful. And the other thing is, I think that we need to send a signal to all the people who live outside the city, that we care about our residents and we hear them. And maybe we can turn the city around and actually bring people into this city, because I think that they'll recognize that their voices are heard and that really the most important thing are the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Miller.
Good evening, Council. Doug Miller, Scranton.
Good evening.
Just like to discuss, obviously, a lot of the issues that we've been dealing with the last few weeks, sticking with the finances. And obviously, we know we have a critical race next week that will have a tremendous impact on the next four years of who is going to lead this city. We obviously know we have many challenges ahead, a lot of tough decisions to make, a lot of tough decisions that were made in the past. And we're certainly going to need more input from a lot of people, whether it's our elected officials or individuals within the public. I did today take some time to speak with Mr. Gerald Cross of the Pennsylvania Economy League. Had a nice, lengthy discussion with him this afternoon. The reason I had this discussion with Mr. Cross was because it came to my attention that the tuition tax, or the P.F.S.T., Pay Your Fair Share Tax, suggestion that I made to council a few weeks ago, was brought up at a Pell meeting, a weekly Pell meeting. And so after learning that, I felt that it was important for me to reach out to Mr. Cross and get his opinion on that suggestion and what he feels would be the best course of action to take moving forward. Throughout our conversation, we talked at length about this particular ordinance that, as I said, back in 2009, was proposed by the mayor of Pittsburgh, as they, as well as Scranton, faced many challenges, inability to pay their bills, pension shortfalls, and a lot of other obligations that at that time they failed to fulfill. And as Scranton, they were also in dire need of cash quickly. And throughout our conversation, we discussed different parts of the ordinance, and we both agreed that the bottom line, as it does, as we discussed, come down to legality. And we ended the conversation by agreeing that we would forward this ordinance and all the information to our law department and allow Attorney Kelly to determine whether or not this is something that can take place. This is something, as Mr. Cross stated to me this afternoon, that the city would have to jump on board, that basically the city, the ball would be in the city's court in terms of moving the pieces forward. Also went out and discussed a lot of other financial issues. And as we discussed, he was well aware that I certainly, through the years, have been one of the frequent critics from the podium in terms of how I've discussed Pell and my feelings towards Pell. And due to that, I did appreciate him being courteous and putting those political differences aside and being willing to discuss a lot of the issues that the city faces. And I did appreciate his thoughts and opinions. Obviously, we may not always see eye to eye on a lot of things, but as we both discussed, we're in a situation right now where we can't afford to allow politics to influence decision-making. And as I told him this afternoon, I think you saw signs of that last year with council and the administration coming together, when many people didn't think that would take place. And I did commend him over the phone that I did appreciate his willingness to cooperate with council and to see the administration come forward and everybody put their ideas and their vision together. As we discussed, we know the plan's not perfect. I shared some concern that I know we're going to fall short on a lot of the revenue enhancements that were in that recovery plan. But as I did state with him, if you're not willing to take chances and try things out, you're not going to know if you could be successful. But he understands the challenges, and he's hopeful that with the incoming council and the incoming administration, that the working relationship that this council started can continue, moving ahead, because that's very important. Without that, as we both agreed, you don't turn a city around. This city got here because of politics and because decisions were made that certainly weren't in our best interests, and it's led us to where we are today. But thankfully, we had a lot of cooperation, and we see some light at the end of this tunnel. And I can only hope that moving forward, we can continue the discussions and not be critical of ideas. I know I've been critical of suggestions, but as I said, when you're in this position, you have to take a look at everything. And again, I'll reiterate a comment tonight that the institutions don't need the city to succeed. I find that to be totally wrong. I find that hard to believe, not only institutions, but anything in the city. I think that's how you can make a statement like that, I think, is disturbing. When children, or I should say, young adults, come to our city and attend our institutions, we want them to thrive, and we don't want them to stay here. We want them to have an opportunity here. So yes, they want a thriving city. I mean, that's obvious. I mean, that's ridiculous to state otherwise. You want strong neighborhoods. You want a safe city. You want opportunity. You want jobs here, so that when they do graduate, whether they're from Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, or from here in Scranton, they stay here and they start a family here. And not when they graduate, they go back to Pittsburgh or they go back to Philadelphia, where there's opportunity for them back home. We want them here. And the way to do that is to get out and vote next Tuesday and make smart choices and vote for people from now on that are qualified, that are highly educated, and are experienced. Because for far too long, we've gone into the ballot box and we've elected people that, yeah, we know who they are, we see them out there, but they don't have any experience. They're never anywhere, they're never here, they're never around. Yet they all come around on Election Day and they want our votes. Well, now's the time we could change that and elect people that truly care and truly believe in the future of this city, because more people my age need to start getting involved. And I truly hope that the younger generation comes out to the ballot box on Tuesday, because it's our future that's at stake, not anybody in this room. It's my future that's at stake, and we need to make tough decisions. And I hope the young people come out and vote, because it's vital that you get involved. This is your city, and our future's at stake. And the actions you take on Tuesday will go a long way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our sign-in sheet. Is there anyone else who cares to address council?
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton. Taxes paid, so forth. Okay, a golden parrot is going to go right away to the people of the Scranton Parking Authority. I mean, this audit has gotten, and it also, I'd like to give that golden parrot to Pell, because over the years, they have done nothing to require, despite all of their influence peddling, they've never required this audit to be on time. And you people have gotten to complain about it, and you've gotten criticized for it. But the people that are really supposed to be in charge are not living up to their duties. And one thing I'd like to mention and ask Mr. Joyce is, note next week on Wall Street losses out of 2007 out of our pension plan, because a good portion of our tax liability is because, I think, about $26 million just evaporated out of the pension plan, thanks to Wall Street. Now, some people, we had our money in a 401K, and fortunately, it eventually came back. But it doesn't seem to have come back to the firemen and police. And it's a real concern of mine. Here, I'm going to be asked to pay more taxes so that Wall Street can line their pockets. And about two weeks ago, somebody criticized my friend Doug there for one of his ideas. That person's idea was to give a massive tax break for somebody creating a job. And as wonderful as that was, I think the figure was $3,500 if they lived in Scranton. Well, I'd like to remind people out there, if you think that's a good idea, that job would have to pay $100,000 before it took up the losses in wage taxes. Or it would take up the money for six minimum-wage jobs at $15,000 a year or slightly more to replace $3,500 tax cut on a business. So, I mean, the figures have to add up here somewhere. Who is going to pay? And we have a lot of people that think that they're entitled to property tax cuts. I don't have kids in school anymore. I'm only putting out one bag of garbage. I shouldn't pay as much. But there and again, what did they cost over the years? It's like I said last week, if somebody put four or five or six kids through school, or even two kids through school, there's a good chance that they will never make rough parity by the time they pass away with property taxes as to what it costs the school system. So somebody else is paying. We had an idea in the state of school taxes being removed, lifted off of housing and property, but then it got into industrial property taxes and everything else. So who's going to pay the bill? I mean, where is this money going to come from? I don't know. So we just have to start paying our taxes, and that's the way it's going to be. And we can't saddle the next guy with everything. And we can't have people tossing bags of trash on the people's lawns and whatever and trying to jimmy things that way. And I'd like to mention, get out Tuesday and vote. Follow the outside money, especially on our executive race, because somebody got a lot of outside money, not off the local unions, but outside money. And I find that really egregious after a while. That is getting ridiculous. Money coming from out of state or some other part of the state, or some other town in Lackawanna County. Why should they be donating money to Scranton unless they have an ulterior motive? There isn't a good reason. They have an ulterior motive. They want their man in there. And shame, shame, shame. And I'll get to the golden parrot. Goes to another one, goes to Bill Clinton. He was caught on a microphone that was turned on. You'd think he'd get used to this by now, that we have to cut Social Security. How does that relate to you people? Well, if these old people don't have their Social Security, how are they going to pay their taxes and garbage fees? They're not. And you're going to get stuck every year, and you're going to have to be the SOB that puts them out of their house or soothes them or whatever. So you're not going to win friends that way. And the thought came out during the recent shutdown. Whether we know it or not, we have welfare estates, like Tennessee. They get $1.65 for every federal dollar that they pay out. We have a congressman in Tennessee that was a big proponent of the shutdown and all of this and go-over-the-cliff talk. And he cut food stamps, and guess what? He got $3.5 million Farm Aid over the last several years. He wants to cut food stamps? Shame, 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 shame. I'm going to invite everybody to join the C Party. That's S.E.A., and that means Scrooge enough already. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, thank you very much. My name is Mike Ozer, and I am a consultant for Verizon Wireless. And last week, I forwarded some information to each one of you by email. We are at a critical stage now for Verizon Wireless in reference to the network build-out. I'm here tonight to ask you if you are interested in the project. Now, the project entails, right now, to this date, two of your city-owned properties for the possibility of a wireless telecommunications facility on them. One is the Cayuga Park, which is near Bloom Avenue, and the other is the recycling plant. So I'd like to know, is this a project that you'd be interested in? It will provide you with income, and everything of the lease that I forwarded to you earlier and to the other parties within the city of Scranton is negotiable. So I'd like to continue with the project, and again, this is only two sites. There's a possibility of three more that will provide you with a long-term income. So is this something that you'd like to proceed with?
I'm certainly interested in learning more. I think many of my colleagues would be as well. And of course, we would have our council solicitor review the information as well. However, we are not singularly or unilaterally empowered to go forward with any decision alone. You would also need the input and the approval of the city administration, specifically the mayor.
Okay. I have already forwarded the information to the mayor, both by fax and by hard copy. Do I have your permission to contact him directly and say, listen, can I proceed with this? I do know that he is not going for reelection. So will he have the authority to proceed with this? And again, in reference to our design visits and lease, there's no obligation on your part until a lease is signed. So I mean, I can proceed and spend the money on engineering, but I do need something from the city that they're interested and that possibly in a couple of months down the road, we can work on a lease or lease is finished and signed, sealed, and delivered for all parties in the military. for all parties in a mutually agreeable fashion.
I would say that if you so choose, you should contact the mayor and arrange for a meeting with him and perhaps representatives of city council as well and the city solicitor. And the mayor and this council is fully empowered until the first Monday in January to make decisions for the city. If however, let us say, one of the parties would not show an interest, it certainly doesn't, I would say, prevent you from then approaching the next administration that will take office the first Monday in January.
Understand.
And will continue to oversee the city for the next four years. So, I think it's worth reaching out now. And as I said, if the outcome is not what you anticipate, reach out again.
Sounds good. Now, just a question to the members here. Is this something that you personally are in favor of or personally as a board in favor of at least pursuing? I'm not saying about signing leases. I'm not saying, you know, putting you on the barrel or putting you, I'm not saying that's an obligation from you, but is this something that you as a board right now would consider?
Yes, I would definitely consider it.
Personally, I would, I would definitely consider it. I would like to know more information on it, but the fact is that, you know, this is something that could help generate revenue for the city. I happen to know that there are some private individuals already in the city that are gaining income from cell towers.
Absolutely.
It's certainly something I would support as well. Unfortunately, we're not as blessed as our neighbors to the north who have gas leases on their property.
Quite true.
But this is certainly, you know, a revenue stream for the city that we need to pursue. And if you want to stick around, I'd be happy to talk with you for a little bit after the meeting tonight or we can exchange.
If that's permissible with you, I'd like to do that.
And I just have one question. It is somewhat related.
Go ahead.
It would be my hope that eventually Verizon might offer a cable franchise in this area. We have been at the mercy of Comcast for many, many years now and they frankly have monopoly on the franchise because there are no other companies that, you know, have been able to come in and provide our area with adequate services. And it is, as I said, my great hope that in the future, and the nearer the future, the better, that we could have, you know, competition.
Understand. Unfortunately for me, that's not my department, but I will reach out to the Verizon project managers and alert them to this fact that you have a strong interest in that.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your time, everyone. I do appreciate it and I'll wait till the end of your meeting. And if there's any other questions that you have either on or off the record, please just let me know. I'll be glad to answer them to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And if I could, Madam President, there's just one building that you mentioned that the city does not own or control, and that's the recycling center. That's under the operation of the county.
In reference to that, I'll have to, I can, I can double, I can check on the location that the radio frequency engineers have requested, but also within that search area is your Weston Park, which had a suitable outcome for radio frequency. So, in reference to what you're saying, I have multiple, we have multiple opportunities with the city.
Well, then you should delete the cycling center and make it Weston Park then.
We can take care of that.
So, the city can get revenue on that, but that's not, that's not a city facility.
Understand.
I think you also mentioned in your email, Naug.
Yes.
And actually, there were several locations.
Yes, there were. There's French, Freechkeen Memorial Park, Naug Park, Weston Park, and fortunately the Scranton Recycling Center, and from there, the Cayuga Park. They are my search areas that are particular and very specific for Verizon Wireless as they are not, they are not the coverage sites. Coverage meaning you go into an area, there's nothing, you put the site up, then you have coverage. These are capacity sites, meaning they are necessary to assist the network that's in operation right now for all the future, the present phone calls and data and texting and also for the very, for the very near future of the next rollout. The next technology rollout.
I've just been informed by one of my colleagues that two local businessmen actually have towers on their properties currently. So, I think, once again, it is something that council is most interested in and we're hoping that the administration would be as well. But again, you know, if there's an issue, don't, don't back away.
I will not, that, that is my, that's my promise to you. I will not back away. And again, thank you very much for your time. And any other questions afterwards, just let me know.
Yes. How much recurring revenue would this generate for the city?
Oh, sorry, I'm supposed to lowball you on that figure and say a dollar a year, but that will never happen. No, it's, it'd be a mutually agreeable figure and if you wish me to state a number now, again, I'd have to lowball it and then from there, we would work within there, but a minimum would be $800 to $1,000 a month per site.
Hmm, very interesting.
So, I mean, and that's, and again, as, as within the emails and all that, everything is negotiable. There are a couple of items in the lease that are FCC mandated, but if you happen to hit one of those, I can, I can tell you. But again, everything is negotiable.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
What, you got a bad back? Uh-oh.
How do you know that, Jack? How do you know that? How do you know this? CJ?
That's from carrying that heavy briefcase full of money around all the time.
Well, tomorrow's the last one. Good luck tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chrissy.
Thank you.
Oh, good evening, Council. Just want to acknowledge the Boston Red Sox winning of the series. That was special to those of us in the minority who, who have been Red Sox fans since we've been knee-high to a grasshopper. On tonight's agenda, 5D reminded me that it's been over a year, Mr. Rogan, since, if I'm correct, since you updated us taxpayers on the status of the currency of OECD active loans and the recovery of balances on loans where the entities have ceased to exist. And I think you should have an obligation to us to do that at least, I would prefer monthly, but at least quarterly at a minimum. Here we are, I mean, I'm flabbergasted. You were being asked, if I read the backup correctly, you were being asked to approve something that was instituted in July of 2012?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan, you got to do a better job of staying on top of these things. You are the community development person and you should have known that.
Well, I did, and just for some information for the public so they know what item we're talking about, the item on the agenda is to reduce the payment amount and the interest rate on a loan that was made to a local business. I spoke to Ms. Abley earlier about this today. And what she explained to me is that OECD is taking a different approach towards delinquencies, where in the past, if there were businesses that weren't paying, wind-up litigation, this is an effort to try to work things out where the loan would still be repaid back to the city. She also did relay to me, and I, this was something I was going to bring up under motions and I think it's something council should do. She relayed that a representative from Alexander's would be available to answer questions from council. I think a caucus would be appropriate, not only for this item specifically, but for this change in procedure in general, as far as the change in, in some of these loans, the modifications.
Well, I think though, what Ms. Schumacher is saying, and I agree with you, yes, there's a difference in their approach, but that change was instituted 15, 16 months ago without our knowledge. And, you know, they have moved ahead with making these changes. They've, they've been in effect quite a long time and now they ask us to approve them. And I think that plays into the fact that OECD, despite numerous requests, I know I made many, many, many. And I was the one originally who requested a monthly report from OECD. And Ms. Abley has failed to provide them. And had she been doing so, we all would have known about these changes when they were occurring.
Absolutely. And I, I understand your frustration and why you're upset. And I agree. I think city, every member of city council should have a balance sheet of what's coming in every month, on what loans are being paid on a monthly basis, on delinquencies and not. But at the end of the day, and we've been down this road with every single department head.
But you are the chairman of the, of the committee and it's up to you to get it to us.
That's right.
Ms. Abley has always, to my estimation, been responsive.
She's one of the better department heads, but we still haven't, as Mrs. Evans mentioned, received those reports.
Just a few more, yeah, before I move on and my five minutes are all gone. What was the original term?
That wasn't included in the backup and I'm going to request that before a caucus.
Oh, but you talked to her today and you didn't ask her what the differences were? I mean, this is 25 years. How many other loans have, are paying a half a percent for 25 years? I'm against that.
None that city council will approve.
I mean, it may be renewable after five years. I mean, are we saying the economy's going to be in the pits forever? What if the interest rates go up to whatever, 6, 7%? I, I think it's bad business and I'm very disappointed in this and I would like to know the original term and why it's being stretched. And I think just airing this tonight will probably cause other people who have loans to come in and I wouldn't blame them as I think they should. If this is the new approach, then they should come in.
Actually, I think we can get that information from the 2007 legislation. The backup should contain the terms.
Okay. Now, moving on to parking. I think it's amazing that the new meter heads were installed in a matter of days, but getting the days of operation on the meter heads is taking weeks and perhaps before it happens, maybe months. Very disappointing.
We'll get back, we'll get back in touch with them and tell them.
Yes, and yeah, I would like to know how much revenue they've been collecting on those two days that are not marked on Saturday and Sunday too, so.
I don't believe they would be, well, as you know, according to the ordinance, they're not charging.
That's why I'd like to know what the, what the percentage is. But now also, because the photos being taken of vehicles by Republic are, if being stored, could be subject to open records requests. So, I would also like to know how long they are retaining those photos. And then last week, Mr. Hughes spoke of ownership of the parking structures themselves and that begs several questions. First, is the city responsible only for the shortfall or the portion of the bond payment over and above the operating expenses? And if so, do we have any control at all over the efficiency of the operation of the Crickets, do we, that's, we're only, we only pay the shortfall of the, of the bond payment? Is that true?
Based on my review, I mean, I haven't looked at it in the depth that you've just requested. But the city is responsible for any shortfall on the bond payment itself. What would happen is that the parking authority is responsible for all maintenance. Either they would borrow the money to do the maintenance or it would come from their operating budget, which would then decrease the amount of money that would be available to pay the bond issue. So, the less money to pay the bond issue, the city would then have to make that up.
Yeah.
It's only recently that, that that event has ever occurred. I mean, I'm not, I haven't reviewed everything that the parking authority has done for their maintenance agreements and everything that's been done, but I believe that most of that has been financed. I think that's one of the things that was financed with the Landmark Bank, maybe not the maintenance, but I know the upgrading for the, that automated system to pay.
Oh, oh, yeah, that 2.99.
You know, I mean, that, that was in there. But of course, the city didn't guarantee the Landmark loan.
Right.
But the maintenance, and I think there's been a lot of maintenance that's been done on the garages, has always been financed by the parking authority or paid in their operating budget. Or if they then borrowed money and the city had guaranteed that, then the city would have guaranteed that in the bond issue.
Okay. And we still own, we, the city of Scranton, still own the structures then?
City of Scranton does not own the structures. Scranton Parking Authority does.
Scranton Parking Authority. Okay. And who pays the insurance for those parking structures?
That's a line item in the Scranton Parking Authority's budget.
Okay. And now the, the other issue, then they are also responsible, that I think, believe it was DRC, did the service life cycle assessment last year and they said that structural repairs were needed at both the Electronic, Electric City and the Linden Street, the original parking structure between the years 2013 and 2016.
I have no idea. I don't know.
Pardon?
I have no idea. I don't know.
Well, who would, who would be responsible? That would be, again, the...
I think whatever would have to be done from a maintenance standpoint right now, that would be the receiver's responsibility from the monies that are coming in, you know, on the parking fees for the garage.
Okay.
That's a maintenance item. I mean, I've, one of the problems that we've had, you know, up in, when we received the budget from council and when we examined Mr. Scopoletti, that, you know, that evening when they came here. This is the first time that the parking authority was ever required to put a budget into the city. And that was one of the things that set this whole thing off like a rocket, is that when we went through the documentation, they had to have a budget approved by city council. It was never done until we demanded it. And that's what I think I referred to as a Mickey Mouse-type budget and I insulted Mickey Mouse. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't a proper budget. And that was one of the real problems that council had with the parking authority and its staff, was that, in fact, when he submitted the budget one time, I sent it back to him. I said, "We wanted a line item budget." They never supplied it. So, I mean, we didn't know.
Yeah.
You know, but that's generally what happens with this.
Yeah. Well, it just, I mean, they make, make it sound as though these structural issues could be, if they're not corrected, could hurt not only the garage, but people's property and perhaps even people. So, I don't know what that would do. But I think, I mean, I really would like to know what their plans are, if we could maybe inquire about that. I don't know if that's legitimate or not. And then, Mr. Joyce, I'm going to skip down here for a minute.
Yes.
At least twice, I've provided case law that states that commercial operators of government-owned facilities are responsible for paying property taxes to the municipality. And you had promised before last year's budget, at least, to run that, run that down and see if General Dynamics, which I think, as I recall, when I, when I did the numbers before the current increases, it would have been in like $600,000 a year added income. Did you ever run that out and were you, were you told that wasn't possible and if so, why?
I remember doing some research on this at the time. I, I do have to go back and look at that though, but I will provide you with an answer next week.
Okay. Because it would be significantly more than that. And I did notice, and of course, I'm partial, being a retiree of Lockheed Martin, but I did notice they have contributed $70,000 to their, the Lakeland School District from, from the Archibald Plant, which I think at least they're giving something back. I can't ever recall seeing anything that General Dynamics has given back to the I can't ever recall seeing anything that General Dynamics has given back to the community other than, of course, the jobs, which are important, and the wage taxes. But it's nice to see them doing a little bit extra, because I know they have budgets for them, all of them do. And then, has council put a formal input to our legislators on the drinking tax? And if so, what did it say? And if not, why not?
I don't believe so, no.
Don't you think that would be appropriate? I mean, I'm concerned. They, they say, there was something in the paper this last week or on the internet that said, it's a solution that's modeled on alleging county string tax, which angers tavern and restaurant owners, but has raised 156 million between 2008 and 2012, and is expected to bring in 34.6 million this year. But that's countywide. I mean, I really think that it would be detrimental to our businesses in this city if that was enacted. And I would urge you to come to a consensus on whether or not you think it's an appropriate tax for just the city, or if they should alter it to make it countywide, or if they should forget it for us and let them know that in writing. Thank you.
Okay. I will comment really, really quickly on the drink tax. I did bring it up the first time it was in the paper. And just like, excuse me, the smoking ban, when it was done citywide, Scranton is, area-wise is so small that it's very easy for somebody to drive from any part in Scranton to one of our neighbors in less than 10 minutes, really, from any part of the city. And my two biggest concerns with the drinking tax, and I spoke to many of the bar owners and actually helped them organize some petitions against the drinking tax, my two main concerns are, number one, is the economic impact to the city, where people who, although the 10% tax may not hurt them that much, the actual cost, but it's the psychological impact of, I don't want to give the city more money when I go to dinner, or if I'm going out for a couple drinks. So I think that would certainly hurt our local bars and our local restaurants. And even more importantly than the economic impact is that I believe with having people traveling from Scranton to outside of the city to drink, it may increase drinking and driving in the area. And I think that's an even more grave concern than the economic impact. So it's something that I would oppose. I actually spoke to a reporter from WBRE yesterday regarding the drink tax. But anything that came to city council, Act 47 needs to be reformed. There's no question about that. But any changes that are gonna be made would first have to originate at the state and then come to council for a vote.
But they are, and it's still active. And that's why I think you all should input. It's, you know, it's Act 47, so we're there, as Mr. Jackowitz pointed out for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I agree with what you're saying. It's impossible for the city of Scranton, but I would like to see, I wouldn't be opposed to a countywide.
Yeah, or statewide. Just like the smoking ban. You know, when it was done in the city, it really hurt businesses. But statewide, it's great. Right.
Is there anyone else who cares to address council?
Mrs. Craig?
Five A motions.
Councilwoman Rogan.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
Just a few things. One of the items I actually wanted to talk about was the drink tax, and I already, I already got that off my chest. Two other issues, one I touched on, one I haven't. I want to talk a little bit about this loan modification. And there are two issues here. There are one, which is the procedural issue, and the other is, speaking about the loan specifically. Now, as far as the procedure goes, it's very frustrating, and I don't believe this should ever happen, that a loan that was approved by a legislative body and an executive body can be changed by just one body. By, from reading, you know, what it's saying in here, July of 2012 is when the payments were reduced by around $750, somewhere around there, without council being notified. And notification would be great, but actually, this is what should have happened in July, is the legislation. On the merits of the issue, I do think we need to have a caucus and discuss it with the business, with OECD, input from the public. Just on principle, I don't have a problem with a renegotiation for a business that is struggling. But that business has to show us that they are struggling. You know, we can't go reducing the percentages, the interest rates, just to do it. You know, if there actually is a risk of the business going under because of the loan, payments being high and the interest rates being high, I would rather get the, as the city would rather get the $798 a month over zero, but by the business going under. But if the business can afford to pay, they should have paid the full amount, as many others have through these loans. So I think it's something we need to look at very closely, and they should all be done on a case-by-case basis. I don't think there should be a blanket policy on changing these loans. I think they should all be voted on by council and signed by the mayor. If the folks working at OECD deem it appropriate, it should be sent down to us when it, you know, it should have been sent to us in July of 2012. And I wouldn't have had an issue with the procedure if that's how it was done. And the administration could negotiate the entire deal, but it still has to be voted on by the legislative branch. That being said, I don't want to harp on department heads. And as I said before, Ms. Abley is one of the better department heads we have. She is open with us, but not perfect, as was pointed out with the reports that we haven't received in a very, very long time. But my final point, election day is Tuesday. We will have a new mayor. There will be a new administration. If I'm lucky enough to be here for another four years, I'm looking forward to working with the new administration. And on that note, I would urge everyone to get out and vote on Tuesday. And that is all for now. Oh, actually, I apologize. One more thing. Residents of North Scranton contacted me over the week for two issues. One, they were very thankful that Mary Street was finally paved after decades. And then, they were very disturbed when they saw that the road was marked up for pave cuts. And I haven't had a chance to get up there yet, but this seems to me to be the exact same situation that me and Mr. Loscom talked about a few months back on Jackson Street, when the street was just paved. And weeks later, it's being cut up by a utility that had to put in new lines. And if we knew they were putting in the new lines, we could let the utility cut it up and pave it. And then we could use those funds to pave another road and, you know, keep it in the neighborhood, do one street over in North Scranton, or put the money towards speeding up the Rockville Avenue Bridge. But this is something that the city and the new administration has to do a much better job of working with the utilities on trying to coordinate when they're going to be making these repairs and when we're doing our street paving projects. With the cost of asphalt and the labor these days, it's as high as it is, we can't afford to waste a single penny on paving. There's so many streets that need to be paved. And the money that we're, the majority of the money we're getting through the federal government can only be used in certain neighborhoods. And then other grant money through the state, which is much smaller, we're trying to use that where we fill in, but we have to watch every single penny of that money and pave where we can and let the utilities pave where they're gonna tear up the roads. So on that note, Mrs. Craig, could we please notify DPW Director Deuer of these concerns? And I know we didn't receive a reply when we asked about Jackson Street and why they didn't catch it. But I guess we could ask again, and why that, nobody noticed that it was on the list to be cut and was paved a week earlier. And that is all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Loscom, do you have any comments or motions?
Yes, just a few things briefly. Just to add to Mr. Rogan's, there was a newly paved court behind Dunkin' Donuts St. Mary's Center there, between Toby Hand Army Depot. And I see that's marked off already, too. So I don't know what's going on here, but somebody is not coordinated. And we had mentioned that months ago, before these paving bids went out. So if you could find out who's responsible for notifying the utilities prior to paving, I think they should pay for the new paving after, if it's their fault. If it's a paving company that's coming in and doing it, not notifying. And also, when they're paving, if they can notify the sewer authority, because even right on Jackson Street yet, there's a real bad sewer lid that sunk way down, and every time you turn the corner, you hit it. There has to be some kind of coordination, or we're just throwing our money away. Another note, again, I agree with Mr. Rogan on the, you know, the refinancing and stuff like that. I think everybody, you know, a lot of people are in the tough times, and I speak from personal experience, that everybody should have the opportunity, if they have the chance, to refinance. The big question here is this was done in 2012, and we're getting it today in front of us. You know, something is wrong here. And my only concern, well, there's many concerns. I have a lot of questions about the whole procedure here. But, you know, suppose HUD does the audit now and they find out that, is that gonna be penalizing the city on a HUD finding? Because we know how strict they are.
Maybe that's why we're finding out now.
But I mean, we've paid some hefty penalties to HUD previously for previous audits. And this here, you know, they could penalize us for reducing interest and payments without approval. So that's a big question I have. I'm gonna, I would either like to see a table, or I'm gonna abstain from voting on it tonight, because I just don't have enough information on it. And also, I would like...
Mr. Loscom, I don't want to cut you off, but if we introduced it tonight and tabled it next week, so we could schedule a caucus, would that be acceptable?
Yeah, either way. Okay.
I think, I think we all agree that a caucus needs to be scheduled to get more information on this and other, you know, loans that...
That's the next question. I would like to see, previous to that caucus, if we could have it in front of us for the caucus, an update on all the loans, as we have seen previously.
Yeah.
On all the loans, the delinquencies, what the statuses are, and how long the delinquencies were, like the dates and everything. Because as Mrs. Schumacher said, this is gonna open the door to a lot of people coming for the same thing. And do we have the ability to do that for everybody, or is it just a certain few that get picked to do it? As is the case in a lot of times. So I'd like to see everybody get their fair share. And then on a final note, you'll probably read about it in the newspaper tomorrow, my pension case was unfavorable to me. The judge voted it down. But I did receive a call from the newspaper. It wasn't Jim. But as they know, I don't respond to the newspaper directly. I never, I stopped doing that a long time ago, when things were changed from what you said. So you're hearing it from me publicly tonight, that, and I've had many people for the last several months asking me, "Are you gonna quit? You're gonna resign? We hear you're gonna resign." The rumor's out there. I have no intention of leaving this seat. I'm gonna continue to fight. And based on, I cannot say anything on the case by rules, you know, by discussion with my attorney. However, I will inform you that it will be appealed. And, you know, that's as far as I could go on it. But I've been fighting hard. I've sacrificed. I'm here trying to work for the public, the best of my heart, my ability. My finances, yes, have definitely been strained. And, you know, I'm finding ways to make ends meet and to keep fighting. The unfortunate thing is, I don't have the time that I had previously to spend on city council business, because I have to make it up other ways. But I have no intention of quitting or resigning, unless my wife says I have to. She, she's the ultimate ruler. But, you know, I continue to try and do the best I can for the people that elected me to this office. And hopefully, and I'm not appealing it for my own personal sake. I'm appealing it for the constitutionality of that, that ordinance and what they're basing everything on. There is a, there is a big difference. And again, I cannot elaborate any further without giving a lot of stuff away, but that's where it's at. And I just wanted to let those that come to this meeting know firsthand from me personally. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Joyce, do you have comments or motions tonight?
Yes, just a few. First tonight, I wanted to take some time to thank a few of the nonprofits that donated to the city of Scranton over the past week. I was notified that we received a $6,000 check from Lutherwood up in the East Mountain area. And ever since I've been on council, this has been a yearly donation by Lutherwood, and I would just like to thank them. Also, we received a $500 check from the Harrison House, and I would also like to thank them, too. In addition, over the past week, city council received a comparison of the funds distributed from the Single Tax Office as of 10/31/2013, in comparison to 10/31 of 2012. So I just want to provide an update of where we are. Current real estate taxes, collections and distribution for the year so far are roughly $15 million. Last year during the same period, collections and distribution was at $12 million. It's a 24.6% increase. However, you do have to factor in that there was a 22% real estate tax increase as well. Delinquent real estate taxes, as of 10/31/13, the city has received $570,000 from the Single Tax Office. As of the same period of time last year, the city received $490,000. So that's an increase of 16.3%. The local service tax, so far, this, as of 10/31 of this year, the city has received $1.25 million in comparison to $1.178 million during the same period of time last year. So this is a 6.6% increase. And finally, business privilege and mercantile taxes. Thus far, the city has received $2.16 million in business privilege and mercantile tax revenue. As of 10/31/2012, the city had received $1.78 million in business privilege and mercantile tax revenue. So that's a 21.7% increase. However, you do have to factor in that there was an increase in the business privilege and mercantile taxes as well. Finally, tonight, there was an issue brought up to city council from residents in East Mountain. And we received a letter, and I'll read it aloud. "Many of us on East Mountain spend time walking around the building that is home to Engine 10. We take children and dogs for walks. People use the stop for the bus. And then there are numerous runners who always park at the site. On Monday, many of us just happened to meet in the lot and we were all voicing the same thought. The building desperately needs repairs. The tracks, also called gutters in America, are completely filled with plants. When it does rain hard, the water comes over the sides. The children have told us that it is also wet in the area where our firemen sit and sleep. A man who was a contractor told us that the roof probably will not survive another winter. After the tragedy that occurred when the garage for the fire truck was shot, we cannot let this fire garage disappear. The girls were lucky that they did not perish. Many other areas of the city had attention. Please take time to do something for this section." The people are concerned, or the people are concerned are residents from Arnold Avenue, Conroy Avenue, Snook Street, Seymour Avenue, and Peeler Avenue, the houses in the Yesu section, and the people on East Mountain Road. So I would just like to say on behalf of this letter that we received, Mrs. Craig, if we could please forward on a copy to Chief Davis and ask him to see that adequate funding is included in the 2014 budget for the repair or replacement of the roof on this fire station as needed. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. I wish to present an update regarding the October 24, 2013... I wish to present an update regarding the October 24, 2013 tax assessment hearings of nearly 30 Scranton businesses. On behalf of council, our solicitor drafted a letter to the Lackawanna County Assessment Appeals Board in reference to the hearings held on October 24 for the reduction of real estate taxes for numerous parcels of land located in the city of Scranton. It reads as follows. "The Council of the City of Scranton requests the Lackawanna County Board of Assessment Appeals to strictly apply the Assessment Law of Pennsylvania to each appeal for reduction in a taxpayer's assessment and reduce an assessment only when the evidence presented. Equally requires the assessment to be reduced to comply with the Assessment Law of Pennsylvania. It must be emphasized that the burden of proof is on the taxpayer, who must present sufficient, admissible evidence to rebut the prima facie validity of the assessment under appeal. Mrs. Craig was allowed to attend the meeting as an observer only, and prior to the start of the hearings, presented council's letter to the board members in attendance and the Deputy Director of Appeals. No other government entity was represented at the hearings. No one from the Scranton School District, no one from the county, and no one from the city's administration voiced any concerns for the potential loss of tax revenue if the board decides to lower the property assessments per the business owner's requests. It is council's hope that the board will provide a fair assessment and take into consideration all of the taxpayers, businesses, and homeowners alike in the city of Scranton when arriving at their decision." In addition, I'd like to address the flooding issues on Augusta Avenue, Lemon Street, Gaston Place, and North Main Avenue. Today, city engineer John Pochus provided our office with an update on the work scheduled to be performed that would alleviate the flooding conditions in that area surrounding Johnson College. After the meeting on October 23 between residents and representatives from the city sewer authority and Johnson College, Mr. Pochus contacted the Director of the Scranton Sewer Authority, Mr. Gene Barrett, who allocated funding from the sewer authority to get the engineering plan or report underway. Mr. Pochus informs us that progress on the project is visible in the form of existing utilities being marked out, and additionally, John Henemuth surveyed the area. Mr. Pochus will continue to update council as the stormwater management project progresses. And that information, I believe, would be very important to the residents of the streets that I previously mentioned, who have been experiencing severe flooding issues in their homes and on their properties. Next, the Office of the City Clerk, City Council, received a petition for permit parking on Fisk Street in Scranton. To the homeowners and residents who signed it, please know that the petition will be forwarded to the appropriate departments, and when a decision is rendered, it will be reported publicly. I'd like to add that since I reside in the vicinity, I'm aware that parking is at a premium in that block, and it is most difficult for two-way traffic to navigate when all parking spaces are filled on both sides of this very steep street. Also, city council received copies of a letter and complaint form of Upper Hill Opposition to the Geisinger CMC expansion projects from residents of Olive Street, Arthur Avenue, Colfax Avenue, Vine Street, and Harrison Avenue, which is addressed to Mr. Michael Wallace, Scranton Zoning Enforcement Officer. These city residents report that the north side of the 1800 block of Mulberry Street is an R1A residential zone. They note that the planned expansion by GCMC is a commercial venture, which, if permitted, would violate the city's zoning laws and result in significant loss to Upper Hill Section residential property value. Further, residents state that the expansion would set a precedent for future commercial encroachment into residential areas. In order to convert the former Audubon School to a commercial use, it seems that GCMC will require a use variance, which can only be granted by the Scranton Zoning Board. Therefore, Mrs. Craig, I ask that you forward five copies of the letter and complaint forms to the members of the zoning board. In addition, and equally importantly, on Wednesday, November 13, 2013, Geisinger CMC is scheduled to appear before the zoning board to seek a use and dimensional variance to convert a residential building to a credit union office at 415 Colfax Avenue in an R1A zone. Interested homeowners should plan to attend the November 13 zoning board meeting. They should voice their concerns regarding the proposed federal credit union office, if they have any. And finally, I have just one citizen's request. Residents report that the no parking signs in the 900 block of South Main Avenue were never changed as requested by city council and approved by Mr. Dewar several months ago. Please send a memo to Mr. Dewar urging him to replace the signs as soon as possible to eliminate hazardous driving conditions. And, Mrs. Craig, if we can also contact Republic Parking to learn when the stickers indicating days of operation will be placed on the meters, and also asking what period of time the photos of parked vehicles within city limits will be retained. In addition, if we can send a letter to Mr. Michael Wassho, the receiver, inquiring if repairs to the two garages will be made between the years of 2014 and 2016, as indicated by the garage study. And that's it.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
If I could just add something to what you had just discussed. The credit union at Geisinger Community Medical Center, my wife is a member, that's a separate entity from Geisinger. It's not affiliated with them. Apparently, they've been on Linden Street for several years, and since Geisinger took over CMC, they've obtained that structure also. So, they've cut their rent, or told them they had to move out. So, that's why they're looking for another location. But it's just basically a small credit union that has nothing to do with the hospital administration itself. But I know that, because I've dropped her off there a few times. I said, "This is a house." And she said, "It's our credit union." But apparently, CMC has other plans for where they were before, so we'll have to keep our ears and eyes open on that. But I just wanted to clarify that it is a separate entity. You know, it was CMC's credit union. I don't even know if it's still called CMC's Credit Union or what. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Craig?
5B, authorizing that the receipt of any funds from the charge schedule, which is Exhibit A, to the contract between the city of Scranton and the 15 authorized towing businesses, which was approved by ordinance file of council number 50, 2013, as amended, be deposited into special city account number 02229550 entitled Public Safety/Policewaregrants, which was created by ordinance file of council number 21, 2004.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton Police Department to the Office of Justice Programs Bulletproof Vest Partnership for the purchase of new ballistic vests for the Scranton Police Officers, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant and disperse the grant funds in the amount of $36,361.76 for the purchase of the vests.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D, amending Resolution Number 144 of 2007 entitled Authorizing the Mayor and Other Appropriate City Officials of the City of Scranton to enter into a loan agreement and make a loan from the Commercial Industrial Revolving Loan Program, Project Number 150.9, in an amount not to exceed $250,000, to Alexander Salon &amp; Spa Incorporated to assist an eligible project. By authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton to execute and enter into a modification extension of the loan agreement between the city of Scranton and Alexander Salon &amp; Spa.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? I find this situation very troubling, as I discussed earlier. I don't approve of receiving legislation 15 to 16 months after the fact, after action was taken. I also do not approve of an interest rate of half a percent throughout the remainder of the term of the loan. I think it does set an unusual precedent, and I will vote tonight to introduce it. But I do have very serious reservations about this particular piece of legislation. And unless there are changes made to the interest rate and to the fact that OECD has ignored city council's active requests for monthly loan updates, I won't be approving it in successive votes.
I would just add, and I think something that we need to talk to the business owners and OECD about is negotiating, you know, if a business is having a hard time and they're in a multi-year loan, I don't think anyone would have a problem with lowering the interest rate, even bringing the interest rate down to zero for two, three years, so they can get back on their feet. But reducing it for the length of the loan, who knows, maybe in five years, the business will triple. And that's what we hope happens. You know, we want the business to grow. And I think what needs to happen in these situations, and this is where the city of Scranton, for decades, has been entirely dysfunctional, is we have to strike a balance between working with the business community and not having giveaways. There is a balance. I believe in incentives for businesses to help them expand and help them create jobs. And loans like this can certainly do that. But it has to be done in a way that's fair, and that's open, and that's available for all businesses throughout the city to have the same opportunities. I know we all are gonna have a lot of questions for the caucus.
Yes.
So, it may be one that we might want to budget a little bit of extra time for when all parties are available.
And, Mrs. Craig, if you could please, as I mentioned earlier, locate the original legislation and any other possible related pieces of legislation. Perhaps even meeting minutes. I do want to be certain also that the significant renovations and additions that were claimed have actually come to fruition since the $250,000 was actually released. As well as, you know, the number of jobs that may have been required to be created.
As I stated under motions, I have many of the same reservations. But I will vote yes to introduce it, and hopefully, we'll receive enough answers to change my mind, but we'll have to see. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, File of Council Number 51, 2013, and ordinance, transferring funds from Fund 04, City of Scranton Parks and Recreation Account, which funds and account are no longer needed for the conduct of city business, and abolishing and closing said account and transferring the funds remaining in said account to the PNC General Funding Checking Account listed below.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, no business at this time.
If there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.